I'd like to call to order the Monday, June 24th, 2019, House of Education meeting. Please rise and place ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are at correspondence and comments from the public. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay. Any public comments? No public comments. So we will move on noting that we are on a revised agenda. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Lomner. I have just one staff retirement to report. Celeste Gerlach is a speech for thought to Wilkes-Allen. She's retiring at the end of this year. And she's served in the district for 20 years. So best wishes to Celeste in her retirement. And then I'm in the receipt of four staff resignations. First one is Becky Friski, first grade teacher at Wilkes-Allen. Effective the end of this year, best wishes to her. She's been with us for 12 years. Krista Schaefer, she's a first grade teacher at Wilkes-Allen. Effective the end of this school year, and she's been with us for 15 years. So best wishes to Krista. And Colleen Sykes, who is an ASD classroom teacher at the middle school. Effective at the end of this year, and she's just been with us for just two years. So best wishes to her. And then Peter Sykes, he's a science teacher that has a middle school. Effective the end of this school year, he's also been with us for two years. So best wishes to Peter. And then lastly, I'm very pleased to announce the recommendation of the hiring of Erin North for our Ralia Elementary School principal position. She has previously employed at public schools at Elliott Elementary School. She's also been a middle school principal, and she's also taught both elementary and middle school. So I'm very excited about the recommendation for that position. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And I don't think we've had any committee meetings, but I want to confirm that with both chairs.
We did not meet. Facilities and finance did not meet. Policy and personnel also did not meet.
Okay, thank you. Goodness, we're at items from board members already. Any items from board members? Feeling a little caught off guard. We're not at the end of the meeting yet. We still have a couple of action items to go through, but anything to share?
My pen just blew. Okay, just spring ones.
Oh, good, good. All right, sounds like no comments or items from board members. So we will move to our action items. And these are items that we'll have some discussion and then vote on individually. The first is the approval of Superintendent Cook's year-end evaluation. And so we discussed at our last meeting, went through the REEDS matrix, went through the template document, provided the scores. You are all in receipt of a summary, which I hope captured the essence of those conversations. Karen did point out one was essentially a typo, and the other, we need to clarify, and I meant to ask Mr. Cook this. We referenced the leadership training that was held. And in one place, we referenced as a fall training, and then in somewhere else, and in one of your documents, you noted that it was held in March. So we wanted to confirm, were there two different ones? So it was nothing in the fall, it was only the March? Okay. So we'll make that sort of technical edit to the summary document with the scores. And the actual template item, I believe, should be in the drive, because that is essentially what we are approving this evening. So if folks don't have it up and open, we can pull that up on our drives now. It's troubling with mine. I'm the one that Michelle was going to upload. But we can verbally just make sure that we're all on the same page and that all the scores are. Oh, I don't know if she was maybe... I was going to add.
Are you the June 11th student?
Oh, that's June 2018.
Yes. No, you know what? I just realized what the issue was, is I had asked for a Word document because I couldn't change the PDFs.
I saw that too.
Okay. And I apologize because I don't, I even don't remember getting the Word document. So let's just walk through it. I think there's a blank one.
Is it the summary that you emailed us or not?
No, it's the chart. And Michelle, I'm not saying that I received a Word document from you either. So we'll have to go with it.
Were you even, are you looking at the student form?
Nope.
The summary document.
Nope. The chart.
Yes, three boxes where the score is on top.
The evaluation framework is the name of the document, yes.
No, it's not.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's a blank one.
It's blank.
It's the one we'll have to follow. Very sorry, everybody. So the professional practice score across the top, the first blank column, which is 40% of the score, is calculated at 3.72. So that was basically the individual, the nine domains, the individual score divided out is 3.72. The personal professional goals, those were basically Steve's SMART goals. We had calculated that out at 3.5, so that number would be figured in there. The student growth calculation, and that we received as a separate document. And that was scored at a 3.85.
Here's the command.
Yes, thank you. So across the top, with the 3.72, the 3.5, and the 3.85, and the weighting with those percentages, Steve's total score is a 3.6755.
This is all available in the email.
Yes, we've had different pieces, parts of it.
Because I saw it already.
Correct.
Right, so we can go back to our email too. Follow it that way.
Yes, but I apologize because this document I should have had prepared for everybody. So under comments, what will appear basically is what we've done in the past, is just reference the addendum. So rather than trying to fit a lot of text into that box, it just says, please see attached. And for the professional practice column in particular, the only other thing we wanted to add was, because it's not technically just the REEDS matrix, it also incorporates the administrative goals. And Karen and I had looked through that, and we determined that all had technically been met.
Yes.
Is that correct? And so we will note that X out of X number of the administrative goals were met, because that carries some of the weight into that score as well. And then the personal professional goals, again, those were Steve's SMART goals. So that narrative is a separate addendum as well. So that is referenced there. And then you saw the board that I proposed in terms of recognizing the student growth and the efforts that have been put into place in that area, STEAM, K3 reading, and next-gen science. So with those comments, and then the attendance figure was the only other one that I didn't have from you, Steve. That's also a blank on the framework document. So that number is plugged in, and I guess we could theoretically accept the evaluation with Steve's score 3.675, and we'll just plug that number in.
Well, it's just a yes/no, isn't it?
True, yeah. It is a yes/no. We know we met it. But it's nice to be able to put the exact figure in so that we have that. So we will record that. Are there any questions or comments or concerns about the numbers, the narrative, or the documentation? Because if not, we can entertain a motion to accept Steve's evaluation and his rating of a 3.6755, which does fall into the highly effective category. Is there a motion? Someone willing to make a motion?
I move that we accept Superintendent Cook's evaluation as summarized by President Lomner.
If that works for me. Yeah, did you catch that, Michelle? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Tracy, a second. Thank you. Any additional discussion, comments? All in favor of accepting the motion to approve Superintendent Cook's evaluation? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. So the next item is Superintendent Cook's contract. And generally, so we currently have a three-year contract in place with Superintendent Cook, and it has been district practice to basically create a rolling cycle, where if performance is doing well, there are no major issues or concerns, that we roll the contract forward an additional year. So this would be, we would be heading into the third and final year of Superintendent Cook's contract. But we're entertaining the proposal to roll that so that technically this would become year two of a new three-year contract for Mr. Cook. So you have seen draft language of the contract. And unfortunately, there were some new developments this afternoon as it relates to health insurance, because we had failed to revisit whether the current language was still in effect or appropriate or applicable going into a new contract year for Mr. Cook. And as it turns out, it's not. And as it turns out, it probably should have been changed last year. But we're not going to worry about that right now. So what I want to do is just walk through everybody. Very basic changes, we're changing of dates, obviously, but if we adopt it, it's effective today. It does reference the fact that we have his performance evaluation as a highly effective. It does not require us to introduce a compensation increase for Superintendent Cook, but it allows us that option, because we are still in contract negotiations with one of our bargaining units. And it's general practice that we don't want to introduce raises across the administrative body until we've settled with our, in particular, our teachers, being the only unit that is still not yet negotiated. So there is some proposed language in there that says, again, it may, we may choose to increase his salary when those bargaining sessions are over. And it just notes that we're not going to decrease Mr. Cook's salary. And then that gives us the opportunity later, if we so choose, that we can negotiate a possible wage increase. And then, again, the effective dates rolling forward for a year. So those are changes to page one and two. And the only other change that is now on the table for consideration is on page 7, I believe. Oh, no, page five, or four, right. Can't count. So you'll see under item 12, letters A and B, the current language, the language that Steve's contract is operating under, has old language. It's how we handle insurance, health insurance coverage for our administrators in the past, was basically saying they'll pay 20% of the cost. And I'll let Steve weigh in a little bit. When the district moved to following the hard cap, which is basically, it's a state-established rate that says, we're not going to require our teachers, we're not going to require other individuals to pay more than a certain amount. That's a hard cap. We introduced that to our teachers and to our administrators previously, but we didn't change Steve's contract. So since we are making a contract change now, the proposal would be to switch that language over to include the hard cap. What you'll see here is there's still reference to, or proposed reference to, an either-or scenario, because it seemed like a sudden, a sudden change to just go from the hard cap to the 20% without having any real board discussion, without knowing the impact of the figures, et cetera. And I'm not saying this to imply that Mr. Cook was trying to introduce anything underhanded. He was just literally trying to update the language of the contract, which I value and respect, that needs to happen. But because we are discussing it tonight, and we haven't had a lot of time to discuss or really analyze the figures, in discussion with our attorney through Trune, we kind of talked about, well, there's, we can put in, we can build in an option and say it would be a hard cap or 20%, and basically whichever is going to be in the best interest of the district, so that we aren't facing a sudden or a massive change that we hadn't calculated in or that we weren't expecting. But as we talked that through, again, we learned, or we clarified that we've basically been reimbursing based on the hard cap for this current fiscal year anyway. So it would not, in fact, be a major change or a hardship to the district. But we wanted to bring both of those, you know, issues to the group, and we can make a decision and say, we want to keep the either-or in there, or we want to just go with the 20%, because that's what, excuse me, just go with the hard cap, because that's what we've enacted for all of our administrators, and it would make it consistent across all administrators. It wouldn't be singling out the superintendent in any other way. Or we could opt to not take action on the contract right now until we have a little more time to discuss or maybe analyze figures. So those are just, I'm laying out the options for what we could do. Again, Mr. Cook is still under contract with us. He still has one more full year. So by not enacting the contract, we're not saying that we don't have full faith and confidence in his work. In my mind, it would just be a sort of an administrative delay, no pun intended, to make sure that we have all the information and can make an informed decision. That being said, knowing that, or learning as we did today, that we're already in effect using the hard cap figure anyway, it would not be a significant change to our current practice. So I will stop talking and let people ask questions, process the information, ask Steve questions if anyone has any about the figures and the possible financial impact.
Well, a process question. So we have language in that proposed contract that would create an option for a wage increase depending upon how the labor negotiations are wrapped up. So if there is a wage increase at a future date, do we still have to approve that in some fashion as an amendment to the contract? Do we have to approve an actual number?
It would not be an amendment to the contract. It would be a motion to approve a compensation package, or compensation rate.
So we're coming back to the contract.
Correct.
But there is some sort of board action approval on it. So, but the language, the health benefits, needs to be in the contract. It's not also part of a compensation package?
We didn't ask that specific question of the attorney this afternoon. We were sort of going on the past practice of it's been included in the contract, and so we approve it as part of the contract. And I think maybe you could speak to either your personal experience and also your past experience as finance director. Has the health insurance and wage ever been negotiated together, or has it always been separate?
It's usually been together. So what's happened is, so my predecessor, Mike, we were always looking at insurance every year. So when we made changes, we would make changes as administrative group, which included Mike. And so when those changes happened, we would just implement those changes. We didn't necessarily go back in his contract either and change the language of the insurance. It was just whatever the original language that was in there. And then when we got a chance to update the contract, we would change it for whatever health insurance changes were in place at that time. So, but it's always been kind of a moving target, because insurance has been going up every year. So we've always been looking at more cost-effective programs for insurance. And so with respect to the cap, so as Tammy mentioned, in 2016, we moved to the hard cap for all groups. And one of the reasons is because we are on 80/20. So because the hard cap basically sets the amount, it also sets how much it's going to increase every year. So 80/20 was more beneficial to the district, but once the rates got to a certain point, that was better to go on the hard cap, not only because it was cost-effective, but it also guaranteed or limited the increases over time when employer would essentially have to pay for any access over that cap. So then 2017, we switched to the hard cap for administrators. So essentially, every, all employees in the district were on the hard cap. So, but unfortunately, so when Laura, our payable person, updated it, she just moved me to the hard cap then too, because that's what we've done in the past for us as administrative group. So it never got changed in my contract to go to the hard cap. But it's been basically in place since then, so.
So let's kind of, go ahead.
I'm just thinking though, just process-wise, since that's kind of the question at the moment. I would say that we could just delay an action on adding the next year to the next board meeting, because we know our intention is to add another year. We already have a contract through the end of June 2020. And we know we have to wait to figure out what's happening with the state budget and our foundational allowance and all of that. So just to have another discussion with the attorney and get this not right, but in a manner that's consistent to carry forward year after year after year as to whether all of this gets, happens in a compensation package, separate from a rollover, or however we want to proceed. I'd be just as comfortable waiting to do that rollover until next month so that we can have just a little more time.
One thing that I will point out is the fact that the Mesa plan, as the insurance provider, was also listed in the previous contract language. And the change away from Mesa to these other plans was a substantial savings to the district. So again, it's not just an issue about the 20% or the hard cap. We have already benefited from the fact that the administrators and the bargaining units have moved away from Mesa. So that change, again, has already happened, practically speaking, even though the contract language didn't reflect that. So that's not in support of or against delaying, but I'm making a point that, again, this is more of a cleanup that should have been caught earlier, but it hasn't. We caught it now. We do want to make sure the language is accurate. And the other piece that would be added either way is the line at the bottom. You'll see the district preserves the right to name a different health insurance provider, because again, Mesa was named, but we changed it. But we changed that for the benefit of the district and the groups, the individuals as well. So that would at least give us some flexibility going forward to say, okay, yes, we know, when he signed it, it was blue cross, but you know, in January, the rates skyrocketed, and we had to change to whatever. That gives us the flexibility to do that.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was, I think for me, it feels like it is kind of that catching up and we're cleaning up the language to catch up to what the practice has been. So, you know, and I was going to ask Rick, like the estimates when we looked at the health insurance costs, and that included probably all the administrators at the hard cap.
Right.
So that's not the question of what that financial hit would be. That's already kind of been the assumed. So for me, this is kind of cleaning up and us catching the contract up to what the practice has been. You know, I think if it makes members more comfortable to wait and to delay it until July, I'm fine with that. But it feels like there's enough flexibility in here to make the changes to whatever pay increase if that happens, depending on how negotiations go, to where like I would be fine with the language if it was approved tonight. But I, so that's just where I'm at.
Yeah, I agree with Molly's take on that. For clarification, this is a past practice rolling all the administrators into this insurance change. Is that against a policy that says the board has to approve all changes for the superintendent? Meaning that in the past practices, something's been subverted here a little bit? Or is this is acceptable when a decision is made that all administrators will move to this new level? If it affects the superintendent, then that's proper? It doesn't have to go through a vote of the board for that move for the superintendent as well?
Well, we've technically approved the administrator contracts as well.
Okay.
So just, it got this.
So this is an administrative error is all?
Yeah. The language got added to one set, and it didn't get added to one individual.
Okay. So again, echoing Molly's sentiments here, I think this could be easily resolved here today. It was just an administrative error.
My question though is really whether or not this kind of language needs to be in the contract? Or can the compensation package to include the whatever wage increase in the health benefits? Just that? If it needs to be in the contract, fine, you know? And we just have to stay on top of it better. But if it doesn't need to be in the contract, then it allows us the ability to change it as we need to based on what the district's doing with all of our other employees.
To answer my question. To sort of answer that question, I think we typically have approved the compensation package with the contract, because we have a salary written in. We're just in an awkward situation where the state budget hasn't been finalized, so therefore our foundational allowance has not been finalized, which is also leading to a delay in the final bargaining. We've had the luxury of the last couple of years of having the state budget be resolved and have those figures. Now, prior to that, there certainly, but certainly well before Steve's time as superintendent, we have had some delays. And so I don't know how, typically, the previous superintendent would not take a raise. And there were many years that nobody got raises. So the contract stayed the same, the compensation stayed the same. So I think ideally, we would be approving it all at once, so that the contract, which includes the compensation, which includes the health coverage. In this instance, there's two pieces that are still a little less firm. But I'm a little more comfortable personally with the hard cap. Again, with Rick confirming that based on our budget figures, we've already calculated it at that. So it's not like the district is going to take a hit. And I sort of implied that it could have, but you confirmed that it wouldn't be taking a hit, because that's the calculation you used anyway.
And I understand Karen's question, and I think it's a good question that we need to ask. I think for me, if we don't approve this change in the language, and the old language still exists in this contract for at least another month. And so then for another month, we have this discordance between what practice is and what we've approved in a contract. And so I would rather kind of make the change and make sure that the contract reflects the practice, and then looking forward to next year, say, can we just pull all of this language out as part of that approval process? Because I'm pretty sure in my contract with my employer, it's kind of the compensation package as whatever, you know?
As negotiated.
As negotiated. I don't think we get this specific. So I think it's an important question to ask. But as you're talking about it and...
But as you're talking about it and realizing that this is the contract that's in place, that means we have another whole month of a contract that is not accurate with what we know the practice to be. And I would rather have our contract in alignment with what we're doing.
Other thoughts? So we, I mean, a motion would be in order if we did want to move forward. I would just point out that, again, we need to decide, are we going to leave the cap or the 20%? Or do we just want to strictly go with the cap, which does two things? It aligns us with the other administrators and it aligns us frankly with the current budget.
That's what I was going to ask, is what's the language in the contracts for the other administrators? Is it just the hard cap?
Just the hard cap.
Yeah.
And all of their employees.
Right, right.
Not just the administrators.
So it would just be yours with an or statement?
We do have a practice of trying to be consistent.
Do you want, well, if, again, a process question. So do you want us to compose a motion that would delete the language concerning or 20% of costs? Or do we first do a motion to amend the contract to delete that language? And then adopt, propose a motion of the amended revised contract? However, what do we call the document that we have at the moment?
It's a draft contract.
Okay.
Contract in place. I would say, so this, there isn't any motion on the floor to do anything. So I think what we might do is decide what language we want in the contract, which, again, could be including the 20% as an and/or, or not an and/or, as a, you know, whichever is greater. Or we just say we want to go for 20%. So let's decide that and then make a motion to accept the proposed contract. And the proposed contract would be based on the language that we've just decided on. Does that make sense?
I would recommend simply going with the hard cap, getting rid of the language on the 20%. That 20% hard cap nonsense has been a difficult explanation. All the years I was in the legislature, continuing to remove it.
Is that an official motion? Is that an official motion?
I will make it that, as long as everybody's in the same place. Going through this hard cap with the 20, it's just.
So the language would be, administrator should choose from the following options. Administrator shall pay the deductibles and the cost of insurance premiums in excess of the state of Michigan hard cap. Hard cap increases are based on the state of Michigan effective date, period. And then the amount will be deducted twice per month. The district reserves the right to name a different health insurance. And I don't know, I guess the B is meant to be the part that starts with this amount will be deducted?
Yes.
Yes.
And I think the reserve's the right to name a different, feels like it should be up in A. But is that, does anyone care?
No.
Just leave it?
Yeah.
Do you need us to do that through a motion, that language change?
I don't think so, because it's just draft language. So I think we can craft a motion to where it says that we will, all right, I will try.
There we go.
So I will move that we accept, or we approve, the amended contract with the language. Now, let's see, okay.
As discussed on June, June, and I almost said January.
With only the hard cap and not including the 20%. That was not done well, but.
Too.
No, it wasn't, but thank you.
Michelle, do you want to read something back?
Yeah, no, don't.
Can I offer a friendly amendment?
Yes, please, thank you. I should make it have Karen do all.
Well, we're talking about this being the contract extension through June of 2021, correct?
Yes.
So can we get that in here to name the contract that it's for? The contract extension through June 2021.
And probably say June 30, 2021?
Yes, it can, that's what the contract says, June 30, 2021.
To include new language.
Revised language.
New revised language, accepting the hard cap insurance benefit. Here we go. Our motion is better. We'll still say you made it. Do you want a second?
Yes.
The friendly amendment, yes.
Did you get that? Okay.
Is it, not to rush you, but is it an acceptance, when you guys have already accepted it once before? Or is this?
Well, we're technically approving the extension. So Karen's friendly amendment is more technically accurate.
Yeah.
Because it's not a new contract, it's a contract extension, which we've made an amendment to.
Yes.
So it's accepting the language, approving it. So if that makes sense to everybody, and that motion language captures that intent, are there any other questions or comments? And I should walk. And you're okay with that?
Especially like we're all talking about you.
So there's a motion on the floor, no further discussion. All in favor of accepting the motion to approve the contract extension with the new health insurance language? All say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for delving through all of that. And so as obviously we just discussed, we will revisit the actual compensation amount as we know more about what our actual figures are. And Superintendent Cook keeps us informed, obviously, of those negotiations. It's state-owned with the bargaining unit. So we are now actually on the consent agenda. So let me read through those. And as always, if you want any poll, that would include the newest added item referencing the approval of the Raleigh Elementary School principal. But I'll go through them in order. Number one, approval, bleh, can't talk, sorry. Approval of the minutes of June 10, 2019 regular board meetings. You approve number two of minutes of our June 10 closed session of meeting, at which there was no action taken. Item number three is the schedule of the 2019-2020 board meetings. Number four, the proposed 2018-2019 final budget amendment that was discussed at the last meeting. Number five, the proposed 2019-2020 budget, also discussed at the last meeting. Item number six, the state aid note. And item number seven, approval of the Raleigh Elementary School principal recommendation. Does anyone want or need any of those polled for discussion or clarification? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Brantley, do we have a second?
I second.
Mr. Mori seconds. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion passes. Let me move to my announcements, which are minimal. We do have our next regularly scheduled board meeting on July 22 at 7:00 p.m. There's no meeting the first, in that week of July, the holidays. And, sorry, I skipped to the wrong page. And, yeah, that is my last announcement. So I will entertain the motion for adjournment. I move that we adjourn. Ms. Pollens moves to adjournment. Anyone else for a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Waylon will second. All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, made? We are adjourned.